All right. This is on, yes? Okay. Welcome to the Litchfield Park Planning and Zoning Commission. There we go. We will now move on to business. And item one is a proposed major general plan amendment application, GPA 22-02-15. And this is up for discussion and possible action to recommend to the city council approval of an amendment or to recommend denial of an amendment. So with that, I will ask our planner, do you have any comments to make from the staff report standing?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm new, John Broke, planner. Been working with Matthew and Paige and the team for about three, four weeks. So I've been around Arizona, Phoenix, planning zoning work for a long time. So I'm here to try to go through the presentation tonight. I've met some of you over the last three, four weeks. So it's a pleasure to be working in Litchfield Park and beautiful community and always has been and glad to be here tonight. So I'm here to present. We've got a PowerPoint tonight and Matthew and Daniel will help me out as needed. So as I understand it, the project's been in the works for quite some time. The commission's reviewed it. I watched your last P&amp;Z meeting virtually on, I think, the YouTube channel. I'll give a rundown of kind of where we're at. Probably call on Matthew and Daniel to fill in the blanks a little bit. So we've got two applications tonight for your review, Mr. Chair and Commission, GPA 2202 and RZ 2202. Little bit of background, so the sites on the immediate northwest corner of Wigwam and Litchfield Road, the general plan amendment would be a request to reduce the required 75,000 square feet of commercial that's currently approved to roughly 14,100 square feet of commercial right on the corner of Wigwam Boulevard and Litchfield Road. The second request would be to modify the neighborhood commercial NC category to high density multifamily on roughly 12.6 acres of the site, the overall site. And I've got some maps that will go through me momentarily. It's about 15 acres. You're familiar with the site. That would leave about 2.2 acres of commercial on the corner of Wigwam and Litchfield. Here's a vicinity map for the commission and for folks that are in the audience tonight. I took this map from the applicant's supplemental. You've probably seen the exhibit from prior discussions on the application. So again, the area, the site in question is on the immediate northwest corner of Wigwam Boulevard and Litchfield Road. City Hall's just to the east and then the pedestrian underpass underneath Old Litchfield Road is, you can kind of see that at the southeast corner of the site. The zoning change, the NC or neighborhood commercial is in red. And then the applicant's proposal, again, this is, I took this from the applicant's supplemental, the residential typically will be shown in yellow or a brown color for residential. And so the residential would stay along the north and west side of the site with the commercial component right on the corner there. A little bit of background, historical annexations in Litchfield Park, typically it's focused on commercial properties along with residential. We don't have a property tax in Litchfield Park, so we really focus on commercial properties and the result in sales tax and employment to pay for the cost of residential, including street maintenance, police and fire services and overall governmental services. Some examples, the Albertson's Monument Point project a couple miles from here. These properties were brought in together to help pay for the costs of the buildings at Litchfield Park. And then the commercial requirement, getting back specifically to the applications tonight, the requirement was for 75,000 square feet of commercial as a prior zoning case that allowed Cachet Homes to develop a few years ago. This is the prior zoning case that I think the commission would be familiar with. The audience may or may not be familiar with it, so I'll go through some of the deal points, if you will, from 2014, so about eight, nine years ago. The city agreed that a portion of the Cachet Homes site could be built on the five acres that was zoned commercially and a portion on the Wigwam Red Course, Golf Course. The city approved JDM partners to build condos on the Wigwam Blue Golf Course, provided that 13 conditions were met back in 2014. Additionally, the Wigwam had to remain a par 70 championship golf course. And note on deal point number two, if you will, is that no action really has ever been taken by JDM for this particular option. And then finally, the third component, the zoning on the 15 acres that is the subject of the discussion tonight, was changed from neighborhood commercial to mixed use and would include a minimum of 75,000 square feet of commercial development. Any residential that would be built would be along Village Parkway, which is discreet on the north side of the site. Similar to, the residential component would be similar to what Cachet built. And then finally, the commercial component would be built before or after, or about the same time, excuse me, as any residential on the balance of the 15 acres. These points were agreed to between the city at the time and JDM partners back in, again, Just a reminder, the 75,000 square feet of commercial is really intended to help pay for city services. Any loss of commercial would potentially impact our budget and that's always a concern as, as we're a small community and sale of commercial sales taxes is important to us. Just a percentage, the applicant's proposal would reduce the commercial by about 82%. Just some factoids, if you will, on public safety costs. Police services is about $1.4 million. Fire services, about half that, 753,000. Jail and detention component is about $1,500. Animal control, $1,500. For a total, public safety costs of about $2.2 million. Right now, our population in Litchfield Park is about 6,847 people and the public safety cost per resident is about $323 per person. Getting back to the case or the application, the proposal, the residential component would add approximately 416 bedrooms to the site. Rough population calculation would be about 438 new residents at full leaseout, if you will. This would be about a 6% increase in city population growth. And based on the data that we have that's on the slide, the additional public safety cost would be about $141,000. Where do we get our city revenues? For Litchfield Park, rental tax, increased sales tax from residential shopping. Good example is the Frye Center up on Litchfield, Kellerman. No current revenue, bare lot, blank slate on the property, obviously. IDM would be the multifamily developer for this project. Will let the applicants speak, but they, they've given us some figures in terms of what the project might generate in terms of city revenues for Litchfield Park. And I don't want to overstep my bounds. I'll let the applicant discuss that. A couple of things you might hear from the applicant, that there's already ample commercial in Litchfield Park. Litchfield Square is under development. We're all familiar with the ongoing development. They've broken ground north and west of City Hall. There's been a lot of discussion about what could be developed on this property. Could a large anchor of mixed use development be developed or is the site more suitable for residential? We have, prior to my arrival, received a lot of interest in mixed use development for the property. Some comments, back before the Frye Center was developed, that a large anchor would not locate there. Obviously Frye's marketplace is one of the larger grocery chains available, end user, if you will, in the Frye's chain, and that particular center is very popular. We think that there might be an opportunity for boutique style, commercial component. Some of the trade names, ADA's, Whole Foods, Trader Joe's come to mind as potential for the site, for this particular site. Traffic counts, reducing the commercial for 75,000 square feet would reduce the traffic generated. Residential typically produces less traffic than commercial. Any development, obviously the site debate comes to any development, will realize additional traffic on both, actually on all three streets that, about the site. So a lot of information here. This is just a brief comparison of the 2018 proposal versus what's on the table today in 2022. The bullet points on the left are the current proposal, the unit mix that's proposed by IDM, zero studios, about 92 units, that would be one bedroom, 36 units of two bedroom, and then 84 units with three bedroom. The total product, I should have mentioned this before, proposes about 212 dwelling units on the multifamily component of the project. And then if you look to the right, the bullet points there, the unit mix is a little bit different. Studio was 18. The one bedroom units, a little bit more, 130. Two bedrooms, 147. And then three bedroom, 18 units. So the density's been reduced a little bit. It was proposed at about 313 units a few years ago and it's, right now it's proposed Apartment availability, just some information for the commission and for our audience members. The street address is City Hall, so within two miles of 214 West Wigwam Boulevard, there's approximately 1,000 units, almost 1,100 units available right now. Within three miles of City Hall, there's approximately 35,93 units. And then within a five mile radius, there's approximately 7,214 apartments that are available. The overall total is about, a little bit less than 12,000 units within five miles. Couple of comments on for rent luxury apartments slash townhomes. Any residential property would be considered rental properties, including townhomes. Sites surrounded by for sale units such as Cachet and the Renaissance Villas, for sale homes to the south. And then luxury apartment, multi-floor buildings, no elevators are included, no ADA, that's Americans with Disabilities Act, no ADA units are proposed on the second floor. We've updated this since the, since Matthew and Daniel presented this to you last month. There was a flurry of activity today. We got some additional input from our residents. So far, we've gotten approximately 36 letters or slash emails from, from area residents. Thirty-four opposed or against the proposal. Two have spoken in support. And then late this afternoon, I think around 3 o'clock, we got a petition from a resident with a handful of names that were signing the petition, that were in opposition. And we can get copies of all those materials to you. With the hearing tonight, we weren't able to, we're not able to include the petition in the package tonight. A little bit more on the current zoning. So right now, neighborhood commercial is what's approved. The request is to go to high density residential for a majority of the site, about 12 acres, like I said. Under the current zoning, the owner slash developer could build mixed use with retail on the first floor and perhaps residential on the upper units. If a proposal was brought forward based on input from the applicant and from staff, along with additional retail, we would consider that as, obviously deferring to the city manager on that in terms of what appropriate development plan might be for the property. We've had a lot of comfort in that being, but the staff's had a lot of conversations with the applicant over the last few years and so this shouldn't be anything new that were a surprise to the, to the applicant. And again, we're concerned with dropping the amount of commercial from 75,000 square feet down to roughly 14,000 square feet. A little bit more on the history. These were covered in some of the earlier slides. So when Cachet Homes project was approved, the second condition that I mentioned before about a portion of the Wigwam Golf Course being allowed to be developed on, there still is that on the table in terms of what JDM would be allowed to develop there with conditions and that. That appears to have been put aside by the, by the owner and the proposal this afternoon tonight is basically kind of putting aside the golf course redevelopment, or at least a portion of it, and focusing on the parcel here on Wigwam, Litchfield Road. In closing, city staff respectfully recommends to the Plan Zoning Commission that proposal, the general plan amendment and the resuming application be denied. We are also recommending that any requirement for 75,000 square feet of commercial space remain on the property dating back to the current approval from 2014. Just for the commission's benefit and those in the audience that have been taking interest in the project, aside from tonight, we have some hearings scheduled for later this month. We're looking at city council consideration on Thursday, December 22nd. That would be held at St. Peter's Celebration Hall. We're not anticipating any action would be taken by council that night. It would be more of a discussion with the council. And then moving forward to next month, next year, the final hearing in front of city council would be Thursday, January 19th, also at St. Peter's. So throw a lot of information at you. Like I said, I'm new, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Commissioners, I just wanted to explain a little bit of the procedural aspects as well with regard to these timeframe. The council has to meet on the 22nd to open a hearing on this matter because of the major general plan amendment. That's a statutory requirement. Thus, it will require the commission to issue a recommendation from tonight's meeting. It's not something that can be continued on until January because they have to have that recommendation in order to be able to consider the item. So just wanted to clarify that for you.
Hang on just a second. Just to, just to clarify, that the recommendation, it doesn't matter whether it's in favor or against. We are required to make a decision and then the council ultimately has the final say, not this commission. Is that correct?
Correct. Purpose of the Planning and Zoning Commission and for the audience's information is to review this item and to consider it and to give the council a recommendation, whether that be in favor, against, or neutral. And then the council considers that recommendation, conducts another hearing, takes additional public input, and then the city council is the one, they're the ultimate decision makers when it comes to this type of action.
Any, any questions for the staff? Or if not, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant and let them make any presentation they want to make.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you. You have our dear presentation slides. Hold on. Let me get that up. Although I'm not necessarily going to go through it slide by slide. So Susan Demmett with Gammage and Burnham. I was here last month and talked to you. We went through a fairly robust presentation last month about the case itself. We talked about the zoning history, what's transpired on the site, type of development that's allowed today. We also had Danny Cord from Elliot Pollak's office here who did an overview of the, okay, thanks, economic and retail apartment analysis that his firm has put together. Danny's not going to necessarily perform a presentation again tonight, but he is here with us if there are any questions sort of related to the economic aspects of the proposal because that has actually, the work that Elliot Pollak's office has done, has been sort of critical in our plans and development of the development plan that you have before you today and sort of our thoughts, beliefs, and expectations as to what is actually reasonable, marketable, and developable on the site. You know, we talked about this last month, we're here. So I'm not going to go back through the same presentation that we did last month. I'm going to kind of talk a little bit about what we heard from you last month, what we've done, you know, over the last 30 days, and then where we are today. And then I'll open it up for questions if you, if anybody wants a refresher on the proposal, I'm happy to do that. So our overriding goal with this 15 acres, and this is part of, you know, it's owned by JDM. They also own the Wigwam Resort and the Golf Course. You know, they have a long-term goal to reinvest in the Golf Course and the resort itself. This is part and parcel of that. This is sort of in their line of first step to actually generate some revenue that they intend to invest back into the resort. Those plans have been under discussion and I think are actively in discussion today. But our goal has been to create a project that really builds on what we would call sort of the Wigwam or Litchfield Park style and aesthetic and create neighborhood, right at a scale, retail shops that we believe as, at both the type of uses that we would put in them and the size, you know, the amount of square footage that are responsive to the market as we see it today. And complement that, dealt with a resort style, I mean, what we would characterize as a luxury multifamily community, again, designed to be sort of a natural transition from existing residential development, both to our west and to the north, Cachet and the Renaissance Villas. I mean, our project is two, one and two stories in height and really is, you know, designed to transition from those existing neighborhoods to, while the city's plan, Litchfield Square across the street. So we, we're here last month, we did ask for feedback because we knew we were asking for continuance when we were here last month. We wanted to get some thoughts and opinions from the Planning and Zoning Commission members because we, and we talked about this last month, we feel a little bit like we're kind of, we have two sets of opinions about how this property should be developed and they don't necessarily naturally align. You know, city staff is very focused on the existing commitment for 75,000 square feet of retail. And the type of development that comes with, you know, that, which would include a residential component, is a much more intense development concept. We absolutely do not believe that the market is there to support 75,000 square feet of retail on the site. We don't think it could be developed successfully. It wouldn't have the type of tenants that we would want and that's not the type of project that JDM is interested in building. You know, at the other end of the spectrum, in our discussions with the community, I think there's a strong desire for something much more, I would say, Litchfield Park in style, maybe a bit lower intensity project, keeping heights down to one and two story to complement the existing neighborhoods. Everyone seems to resonate when we talk about boutique retail that maybe is branded with some Wigwam restaurants and things like that at the facility. There's been a definite interest in for sale residential project, product instead of the multifamily, you know, the rental community that we have proposed today. And so, you know, we're, we're working within those, I think, really sort of opposing concepts of what should be developed here. The existing zoning allows, aligns a lot more with what city staff perspective is like. And so some of the feedback that we got from you last month, you know, should include, I mean, really included that. And it was, we, we had limited feedback, but we did have some that, you know, that we should take a step back, look at context, try to craft a development proposal that responds to and makes sense to the market today and what's in and around the site today. We were encouraged to be more creative into how we interpreted, you know, a mixed use type of project and look for a development proposal that, you know, really would meet it in the middle somewhere between, I think, what the community probably prefers to see and, you know, what we're hearing from city staff. So outside of, you know, those thoughts and opinions and directives, we also have to look at the economics, what the market will bear, what we can get support for from an investment side of things. We need a project that actually will be successful and that we believe, you know, can be built and leased up with, whether it's on the retail or the multifamily side. And, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, we, we don't look at this 15 acres in isolation. We look at it as part of the Wigwam Resort and a bigger, you know, bigger story that will unfold over time. And this shouldn't be necessarily viewed as an isolated project because I think long-term the, you know, reinvestment that is planned in the resort and the opportunities to elevate that resort, you know, have a much more meaningful economic impact for the city than what we do on this 15 acres. So over the last month, you know, we've had a number of internal conversations with JDM. We actually brought a new architect into the mix over the last month to look at some alternative development proposals for us. We had a few conversations with city staff about some things we thought we might be able to do to potentially maybe increase the retail component that would result in some changes to the multifamily mix of things. We have not evaluated and are not considering a for sale product on the site. We still are looking at high-end rental multifamily community. And I think the conclusion we reached after, you know, spending several weeks going through that exercise is that, you know, even with the compromises that we maybe thought we could bring to the table, we were still a long ways away from staff and from what staff wanted to see in generating staff support. You know, at the end of the day, JDM on the Wigwam side, You know, at the end of the day, JDM on the Wigwam side, IDM, who is a national multifamily developer, they're all, they're both very deeply experienced real estate developers. And, you know, they're looking at this piece of property and this project not necessarily to maximize the development potential of what they can put on this site, but there's a very intentional development concept that they want to execute, and it is to try to create an extension of the neighborhood and build on the Wigwam brand and create something that is just distinctively Litchfield Park, you know, maybe in an older school, Litchfield Parkway than your Litchfield Square way. You know, we believe that this project, as we presented it to you last month, is responsive to the market, both on the retail side and the multifamily side. And we have absolutely no confidence that we could successfully develop seventy-five thousand or fifty thousand square feet of retail on this property. You know, just as a side note, and this comes from Danny Court's work that he's done and the studies that we have submitted, you know, the city's Litchfield Square project alone, you know, if developed as currently planned, and it's still largely a paper project, but as planned, you know, according to our analysis, that project itself will provide more than thirty percent, thirty-one percent of the larger region's retail demand for the next thirty-three years. And like, it's a lot. It's a big undertaking. We don't think you can have that on Litchfield Square and try to successfully at a high level execute fifty or seventy-five thousand square feet of retail on our site. We also really strongly believe, again, on the work that Danny has done, that our project does pay for itself and has a net positive economic impact for the city. You know, initially, that's by providing more than three million dollars in construction-related revenues from the development of the project, and then around five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars annually in recurring revenues from a variety of sources. And again, this is all detailed in the economic analysis that we've submitted. You know, ultimately, at the end of the day, when you talk about adding new residents, residents are the sole generator of retail sales tax. I mean, retail stores simply collect the tax. It's the people that you have here that come here that execute on that local spending and create those tax dollars. So all of that to say, you know, after the last month and after we talked to you last month, we really came full circle as a development team and we're kind of back to where we started and we kind of reaffirming our commitment to the development plan that we submitted previously. We haven't changed that. We intend to move forward with that development plan. So it's the, it's a hundred ninety-six, it's actually not two hundred twelve, it's a hundred ninety-six units total. That includes a hundred sixty-eight multifamily units in the two-story buildings, the twenty-eight townhomes, and then slightly over fourteen thousand square feet of boutique retail on the corner. You know, we believe that that proposal does a few things that I think check boxes of what we've been asked to do. One is that the scale and intensity of the development matches the neighborhood of keeping sites or heights at one to two stories. This project will provide housing diversity through high-end multifamily, something that does not exist in the city of Litchfield Park today, that is really intentionally designed to look and feel like the existing neighborhood. And we're providing at what we think is a right-sized boutique-style neighborhood component, commercial component, that does have positive economic impacts for the city. You know, if we were to move forward into the existing zoning with seventy-five thousand square feet of retail, again, that's a much different project. That, you know, we did plan that out. I think we shared that with you last month. I mean, that's pretty much three stories across the entire site. It requires a parking structure, you know, a parking field with eight hundred parking spaces. It's just, it's apples and oranges from what we're proposing today, and I don't know that that's necessarily what the community wants in their backyard either. So, I mean, with that, I think that we're back to say, we're back to really just say, you know, we have the proposal in front of you tonight that we had last month, and that's what we're asking you to vote on this evening. We're happy to, you know, answer questions about it, to talk about ideas or thoughts you have, but, you know, we have decided, or JDM has decided, that they want to move forward with that existing development plan. So with that, I am happy to walk through it. If anybody wants to see the renderings again, we've got the exhibits up here. We're happy to answer any questions.
Do any members of the commission have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Pritchard?
Now, this is for JDM, IDM, or the city. What is your development timeline? And have you got any commitments from Liberty to provide sewer capacity? Because they're tapped out at the moment, as far as I know.
Yeah, okay. So our timeline is largely dependent on what happens with Liberty. I'm like, no one is moving forward with development in Litchfield Park until that issue is resolved. I mean, we understand solutions are in the works, you know, and that there is a timeline of maybe twenty-twenty-four-ish, twenty-twenty-five maybe, that they will have a solution in place, which probably aligns with the amount of time it would take for us to finish developing plans for this project that through the city system, you know, you've got a lot of, you know, presumably, we would try to get to a point doing horizontal development work sort of on a parallel path with, you know, Liberty finishing up their facilities, but, you know, that will be it at the end of the day. We can't open anything until they're, until they're done.
Okay. Yes.
You mentioned a net positive for the city in terms financially, three million construction fees, and was it about five hundred eighty-five thousand annually? Does the city agree with your assessment, your numbers?
I would probably have the city, you know, answer that question. We have not gotten any formal review, analysis, or feedback from the economic study and analysis that we've done, so I really can't answer that question.
I have John tackle that one for you. In the meantime, I'll give you, we have one request to speak. Procedurally, although we did the hearing at the last meeting, the commission can take other comments again if you would like.
Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, I was thinking Joe was going to answer that question. I might go back to the city manager. I, we have not, as Susan said, we've not really done a full analysis in terms of some of the information provided. Matthew, do you have anything to add on the economic study?
I don't really have anything to add on the economic analysis outside of what you have seen in the presentation. I would address the Liberty question that was asked. And Susan is right, our projects are dependent on Liberty as well, just as well as this project is. The, for everyone in the room that doesn't know this, Liberty that serves Litchfield Park, the city, parts of City of Goodyear, et cetera, are currently over sewer capacity. So that's an issue. So they're working to correct that situation. So the latest and greatest on this is that Liberty has promised us they'll be able to issue what's called a letter of committal by May of twenty-three. And that letter of committal will say that we agree to serve you X amount of gallons. They would have to do the same thing for this project as well. It's important to understand they're not saying we'll serve you in May of twenty-three. They're saying we can guarantee how many gallons you can have. But as Susan said, if they were going to build this project, that would be an issue with this timeline anyway because a project of this size, it just takes time to build. It would be, in my opinion, that Liberty would have the issue fixed before they were ever needing to hook off. Other questions for me?
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'm going to take some comments from, what's her name? I can't tell if it's Claudia or Claude Weiss?
Claudia.
Claudia.
Thank you. Hi. I'm sorry, I wasn't aware that I was going to be able to speak, so I wrote it on this paper, so I'm going to jump around, but I do know I have three minutes. Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission and fellow citizens. I'm here tonight to speak out against the proposed changes to the general plan and the proposed rezoning. My family and I moved to Litchfield Park because of its unique charm. It reminds me of the town centers that all of these master-planned communities try to recreate up and down the valley. Failing to develop the land at Wigwam and Litchfield to further enhance that charm is short-sighted and potentially harmful. There's nothing to be gained by making that area residential, at least for the citizens. Please do not approve changes in order to provide profits to a developer that has not followed through on their promises from past developments. It's not a matter of revenue. I'd rather have an empty lot than a generic apartment that destroyed the charm and nature of the city. I can think of ten similar retail residential mixed-use properties within a few miles of here. And I'm not sure why the developer would agree to a deal that included seventy-five thousand acres of commercial development if they don't think it's feasible. I trust that, I trust city staff to do what's best for the city, and I think it's insulting to insinuate that JDM knows what's better for Litchfield Park than those people who serve the city and those people who work for the city. So thank you for your time and, oh, I'm sorry. The city planners are not in favor of this proposal, and it does not benefit current citizens. I think I said that, I'm sorry. I have like pens and I'm jumping all around. But again, just speaking out against the proposals. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. At this point, before I, we move on to perhaps voting on these two options, do any of our commission members have any comments that they would like to make? Okay.
Hi. Back in two thousand fourteen, I was around. I know you weren't. And at that point in time, there were six general plan amendments that came before a city that had not happened before. JDM had four of those come before the city. And at that time, there was a great deal of negotiation, as you've heard, and we've gone through this several times. I was primarily involved with trying to prevent JDM from doing a lot of building on the golf courses, and so myself and two other residents formed a community group, basically, an organization that basically tried to negotiate with JDM. And we had private meetings with Tom O'Malley and Paul Gilbert, who was the previous attorney representing JDM on these. And at that point in time, when we were having these meetings, we knew that what was important to the residents was not having their views and property values destroyed with something being placed on the golf course. However, also with that was the great concern that our city is a tiny little dot on the map and we have no property tax and we need to be able to balance out the number of residents with the number of, the amount of income that we receive. And I know that with the, with the construction fees and everything else, we would, as a city, be gaining a great deal of revenue, a few million dollars. However, twenty years down the road, that three million dollars isn't going to do a whole lot of good, and that is a big concern, I think, from the city's perspective. I know that the, there will be revenue generated from rental taxes, but in comparison to the amount that the city is going to have to invest in those individuals who are living in that large of a complex, I don't know if it would necessarily even out over time. I do think that this is an extremely busy corner. I believe it's the last corner in Litchfield Park that can be developed at this point in time. And since two thousand fourteen, both city, city of Goodyear, which is immediately to the south of this vacant lot, has grown by over twenty-four thousand people. It was around seventy-seven thousand in two thousand fourteen. The last eight years, it's gained twenty-four thousand people. City of Litchfield Park, we were around eight thousand back in two thousand fourteen. I believe we're right around seven thousand now. And that seven thousand, those seven thousand people represent the people who want to live in the city and what are also, or we don't have a lot more space. Granted, I realize that the Litchfield Square, it's going to generate a lot of revenue, but we don't know what's going to happen with that. It hasn't been completely finished. We don't have people who are in there. We don't know where that is necessarily going to lead. This particular corner, it is a very busy corner, and it can, it has high visibility for not just our city, but the city of Goodyear. And I'm not necessarily sure that getting rid of seventy-five thousand square feet of commercial property and trading it into residential is necessarily the best plan from a financial standpoint for our city. I do think that the, I don't know what property, what commercial property may go in there, but I do think that there's definitely more room for negotiation because this, it seems like just getting rid of seventy, reducing seventy-five thousand down to almost nothing just doesn't really seem feasible for our city from a financial standpoint.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Okay, let me make just a few comments. I can recall the previous, you know, I've been on the commission for a while now, and we've been through this before, and each of the previous times, negotiations were underway, and in each, each time, the developers were given what they wanted with the promise that if they were going to build more, they were going to have to comply with the commercial requirements. Each time, every time they come back, that's the first thing they want to do is do away with this. So right now, staff, we have before us two items. Item A is the major general plan amendment application, which the staff has recommended that we deny that, or we don't have the authority to deny, but we make a recommendation. The other one under B has to do with the rezoning amendment to have, be able to have a higher density there than what was discussed before. And the last thing I will say, and it's a different kind of a development, but when the, what is now the Frye's Supercenter was being built, we were hearing, meeting after meeting, you'll never be able to lease it out, big boxes are going away, it'll never happen. Their, the request was denied, things moved forward. Within literally a matter of weeks, the entire project up there was spoken for, you know, and built out in, you know, in record time. Now, that's a different kind of a project. That's not necessarily what we would hope to see on this other lot. But anyway, just to kind of summarize where we're at, so what I would propose we do is we start with item A, which is the general plan amendment, and we need someone to make a motion. And again, we don't have the authority to do the, make this a final thing. It's just a recommendation, but we have to make a recommendation tonight, whether it's yea or nay that it goes on to the town council this night. So we're at item A now, and I would call for someone to make a motion, either recommending approval or recommending denial of the application.
Make a motion for denial.
Okay, we have a motion for denial. Is there a second? Commissioner Lawrence has seconded, so we have before us a motion. At this time, I'll call for the vote. All those in, who are in favor of the motion, which is to deny, since I've only got one microphone, if everyone that wishes to deny, just raise their hand for denial. I see, I see six to deny. Is there, is there a vote to approve? And Commissioner Derry has voted to approve, so by six to one, the application is denied. We now move on to item B, which is the proposed rezoning amendment. Again, staff is opposed, has opposed that. Is there a motion to either approve or deny the rezoning amendment?
Make motion to deny.
Is there, is there a second to deny the application for the rezoning?
Second.
Barbara Lawrence?
Deborah. Second motion.
Commissioner Lawrence has seconded. Again, I will call for the vote. If everyone will raise their hand, all those in favor of the motion to deny, please raise your hand. At this point, we have one, two, three, four, five, it appears for, well, maybe not. Is, I'm counting, one, two, three, five, that's right. Okay, five, five to deny. Are there those that are in? Are there those that are in favor of approving? Okay, so we have two in favor of approving, so by five to two, the motion to deny is approved. And just, just for clarity, Commissioner Connor, did you, did you vote to deny item A? Okay. Just to make sure our record's clear. All right, thank you. With that, we move on to the approval of the minutes. Discussion, possible action to approve and deliver 10 regular, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the November meeting with, ask corrected.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. I will, I will second that. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please raise your hand. Minutes are approved. With that, we'll move on to staff report on current events. Is there any staff report on current events?
Not this time.
They're telling me there is not, so at this point, we're not going to have an executive session, so moving on, is there a motion to adjourn? Bob Derry has moved to adjourn. We have a second. Commissioner Lawrence, all those in favor of adjourning, raise your hands. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.